Okay, I have three o'clock on the dot. We will call our no verbal work session meeting to order. Thanks for everyone being here. It's always an interesting time of the year, the holidays and I think next Thursday. We know we're all going to be thankful for all we have, but we don't do that every day, especially with our school system. So if you would join me or join us for our plan to our implication, if you would please put a search.
Now, heaven above, we're thankful today for the many ways you bless us. We thankful for this board and we pray that you would bless us, that decisions we make might be in our wheel and we might be able to do what's in the best interest of our employees and students. Father, we're so thankful for all, all the many ways you bless us and we ask that you continue to keep in mind those people living in devastated areas in Florida and up in western North Carolina, that you continue to bless them and help them meet their needs, Father, and we just give you the honor and glory and we love thee and I say this in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Goins. And you know, in military, we called us called short timers, you know, when you got close to the end and half of them wouldn't show up. So thank you for being here today. I appreciate you coming to your last meeting. Looking forward to all that insight you're going to have for today.
I have a calendar on my wall.
Okay, got you. All right. I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Bledsoe, second by Mr. Hutchins. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Thank you very much. Dr. Reeves, high school master planning architect selection process and Mr. Drong's.
Robert here.
Yes, he is.
We'll wait on Robert.
Robert.
I'm joining.
Hey, Robert.
Hello. Mr. Drong, oh, he's shaving for Christmas or Thanksgiving or something. Kind of look presentable. And got another shirt on, I'll have to call it. Just can't keep up with.
How is everybody today?
Good. How are you doing?
Good. For members, Robert and I are coming to you tonight really seeking direction on the next step. One, we're very fortunate to have received funding to go ahead and hire an architect for master campus planning for our three high schools. So Robert put together an RFQ that was sent out, was placed in the West Salem Journal, also I think it was in planning rooms. You had six different architectural firms that submitted their qualifications. And so now it's really up to us to narrow that down and take the next step on trying to select the architect. As a part of that, we, I put together an evaluation rubric based on RFQ. And so you have that information. That's, that is just, that's just information.
Where is it? Is it in your staff report?
It's in the, it's on the document. It's in board docs.
Yeah.
And it's, it's information. This is a rubric and kind of it breaks, breaks everything down from experience and reputation, response to the project objectives, personnel qualification, schedule management, overall proposal quality. Again, this is just for your information. What we did several years ago, when we selected the architect to help us do the work at the three elementary schools is the board conducted interviews. And at that time, the buildings and grounds committee did the interview process. I don't remember the number of architectural firms that that buildings and grounds committee interviewed. I think it was four or five. And then the buildings and grounds committee brought a recommendation to the board of education. So just kind of, kind of say all that to say, how would you like to proceed with next steps? You have six firms that have submitted their proposals and I would like to move forward as quickly as we could to go ahead and narrow this down and, and begin the selection process.
How many of these six have we done business with before?
We have worked with.
LS3?
We have worked with LS3.
When they were Bownies.
Yep. They, they also helped us with our needs-based grant application. Mr., Mr. Hutchins, you remember the architectural firm that came today? That, that was LS3P. It was Bownies originally, years ago. We have worked, we're currently working with WM2A. We're working with them on the safety vest field project. We have worked with Walter Robbs, which is now Michael Graves. And I think on some small projects, we've worked with Peterson Gordon.
They did East Series, Vista, Pleachers.
So just Adams and Little, all the ones we helped?
We have worked with Little. They did Rockford and Pilot. They did those two schools.
Correct. And the, and the renovations to what is now Pilot Elementary.
Yep.
Man, how did we write the scores?
So the RFQ was taken and then the, this was taken. We fed it into a computer system and was able to develop the evaluation and the scores.
So there wasn't any objection about the scores?
No, it's totally based on this, totally based on this submitted, this submitted. It's just a guide for you, kind of.
I had supervision.
One step. I assumed that you want to do interviews as a next step.
Are you going to cut it down to?
I think you can say all firms are, all firms scored really high on the rubric.
You're going to interview all five or cut them to three or what do we term that?
Last one we got is six.
That's our decision, I guess. Seven, I'll get it.
There's six.
Six.
I think they now could have about three. That's what I said anyway, you know.
I mean, you've done business with them before. If we pick three, we go, you comfortable with the scores on the rubric? Have we given them that to take the top three?
I'm not going to ask you which one it is, but is there somebody that stands out to you that you would prefer to work with or one or two perhaps?
Worked with five of them. I'm not having any issues with any of them, just to be honest with you. They've all, they've all been a pleasure to work with and, and done good quality work in my opinion. The only thing that I would suggest to the board is to look strongly at their workload because we want to be sure whomever we award this to, that they can take this work and do it in a timely manner and thoroughly and have it back to us in the timeframe that the board asked to have it back.
That sort of factored into the rubric score in some way, doesn't it?
It is.
Schedule management and we see who's the highest score on them is also the overall high school.
Since, since we can't really take action on everything in the work session, I would propose we come back in December and pick three and appoint whatever you all think. But then appoint, which is going to come later, I was going to talk about the meeting. I'd like to go back to committees and have a facility or building grounds committee and policy and finance. But anyway, appoint a representative or two from the board and let them with Robert and Dr. Reeves interview the top three and then bring it back to the board for recommendation in January.
Okay.
Is that fast enough?
I think in RFQ, we gave the firm 180 days to complete the master plan. We really didn't set forth a timeline on when those would start, but we assumed January 1 or whatever award someone at the January meeting. I would love to have a firm selected. We have a meeting with county commissioners on February the 12th. That's their budget work session. You directed me to set up a meeting with the commissioners. I met with Chris last week or week before and he felt like that would be probably the right time for, for us to come in, have about an hour. I think it'd be great if we have that architect under contract and they could go with us to that, that meeting on February 12th. So I think your timeline, January 1, it'd be great if we could have all that done, taken care of by January 1. Of course, obviously then there's a contract and that, that work to be worked out after the selection.
Well, I don't see any reason why I, a December 3rd or 2nd where we meet next and then Raleigh will be on board to be able to have a part in that decision too, being in East End construction. And then that would maybe we set up interviews by the mid-month and have somebody, uh, we're selected by January 12th.
Before Chris, yeah. Really need to have it.
The board meeting is January the 6th, but you'll need, you need it before that so it would have to be done in the December.
Well, I think if we, if we have them selected at January, if we select them at January 6th, then they could go to us at that meeting.
That would be good.
February.
So as long as we have, as long as we have said by the January meeting or at the January meeting, this is approved.
Approved.
As long as we approve it. Cause I, I would like to go ahead now, this is up to y'all, but you being in construction and you being in this business and Raleigh, y'all three meet with, meet with our board, that's y'all.
Yeah, I'm good with that too.
I'm good with that.
Cause I'm not in, you know, y'all, that's y'all's forte.
Okay. My only question about is part of, when we went to the commissioner, we, we asked for them for the money to, to do the master plan and to start or complete the design of phase one. Can, is that taken into consideration here when you did this? Is this, so, so we're talking about a separate firm to do the design of that?
No, it's all one.
It's all one. Okay. So whoever we select will help us with the design of phase. Okay, good. So that'll put us ahead for the next time we need to go to ask for money.
So maybe by the end or by the budget request, we could potentially have a figure.
Okay, for phase one.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, if we give it, if we hire them January the 6th.
An architect figure or a figure for the facility?
Facility.
No, as we're going to give them 180 days.
They got to decide first.
I think where he's going is a rough estimate. If we're looking at cafeteria and kitchens for East Series and Series Central, what's it going to cost?
Right.
Cafeteria and kitchens. We know what Powell's told us.
Next fiscal year.
If we get them started on those.
Yeah, just around about.
Cause that's really what that February 12th conversation is going to look like.
How do we get started on this?
How do we, how do we get started on those two? There'll be another needs-based grant that comes out probably in August. We can apply for it again. We'll, we'll be well underway by then and should have some pretty real specific, at least master campus plans that we could include in that application. I don't know that we'll have phase, we won't have phase one drawn, but we'll be well on our way.
I'm just a little nervous, we'll be squeezed a little bit if we don't make a decision today on who we're going to interview. I mean, there's, you know, you're getting.
Let's say the top three by their rubrics.
I'm comfortable with that, just, I mean, y'all, the more you know, and I can follow up as the day and make sure he's going to be on the committee and then when we come back, the red press forward.
I say y'all, y'all go ahead and start setting up the meetings for those three, top three.
They have already hopped on the 18th for that breakfast, that breakfast that morning that week. If we can do it that day, we can't do it that day and let me know when so I, and I need to know a little bit ahead of time, cause that's walking up and leaving.
Yeah, I could actually do it probably anywhere from 10:30 on after that, for that date.
Yeah. Not good, but still ten o'clock at night.
Okay. So just do it all with it. You're using one, one day?
Yeah.
Or whatever we can set up. I mean, an hour a piece, you think would be?
I don't think, um, well, we can do an hour.
Or whatever, I mean, whatever, to me, that, we've got their proposal. That interview is more to get comfortable with, they can understand if they can do it or not, if they would be the best firm to do it, stuff like the qualifications because there's no way that you did a process like this. It's just too many, too many variables.
And it's also helps you understand how many in-house architects do they have, in-house engineers? How much of this work would you have to sub out? Would that delay the timeline? I'm always interested in knowing other school systems they've worked for. Obviously they've given us a list of those. It's always good to have some, some reference points based on other folks that they've worked with. I think all firms that have applied.
Due area-based schedule.
Reputable firms. I do think Robert's point on timeline is one of the most important pieces. And the other piece that I'm concerned, or I guess I'm interested in knowing is that what other projects have you done like ours? So we're, we're not looking at a new school, we're looking at a renovation and then that, that's going to create some creativity and innovation. Have you done that in other places? And if so, show us that. You know, we, we can put together some questions that would help us understand their experience because when you build an old building, it means phasing and we're going to have to really think about how, where we start, once we get started on phase one and then how we get to phase two, phase three, phase four. Cause that really means kind of working either in a clockwise format or counterclockwise based on parking, bathrooms, life safety, electrical issues.
Student access, lecture room facilities.
Entrance to the building, safety, all those pieces, it's got, to do these high school renovations, it's going to be kind of messy. So we're going to need someone that's got experience that has done this kind of work.
So Tony, do you also have the 9th and the 16th since those are Mondays?
They are Mondays and yes.
Okay. So I was thinking if we can go, I'm okay on the afternoon of the 9th and then the morning of the 16th. So is, are y'all okay with them when they call Raleigh? If he's okay with those three days, the 9th, 16th and 18th and see what we can set up for those.
Absolutely.
One day, hopefully, will that work for y'all and for Robert?
I'll make it work.
Then y'all just come back to board January, we can approve whichever one y'all say that y'all like the best and roll with it. That gives you, that's the timeline you'd like to stick to.
January 6th. I'm putting along six of the top three. I don't think you would hurt them.
For interviews.
Yeah, I don't think you would hurt them. The interviews, top three, four.
Well, those are the top three, not all we got here.
Yeah. Okay. So yeah, I don't have problems with putting it on the record that of the three that we agreed is more of the interview unless y'all think that'll be a problem.
This firm is one that I, we, we're currently working with, partially based, two different locations. Score's a little bit less than the top three, but not far. They are somewhat local.
Are any of the others? Is Adams one from Galax or is that it?
This one.
Okay, that's one from Galax.
These folks are in Western Salem.
Adams is from Moore's.
Okay.
I'm not sitting in on all five. Y'all, y'all want to sit through five? I'm okay with it if y'all are.
Well, I mean, if the score being that close, so if we probably do five, we probably want to do six, I would say, because they're sick of them, right?
Do them all.
If y'all are okay with it.
Do them all.
And we got three days. We got Adams, LS3, Michael Graves, Peterson, Gordon and WM2A.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So that, I mean, we still have got three days. If we can't get them done, well, we obviously will not get them done in one day, I would think. So we can do them too. So that could be everybody. So if that's the case, then I'm not sure we need a motion. We just got, we got five or six we want to interview.
So let us set it up.
Set it up for us for one of those three days or a combination of those three.
Robert's going to work on questions if, if, if you have questions, let us know.
I think that also gives us some time because the, their RFQs are in there and we can look at them, a couple of weeks to see if we have any questions coming.
My biggest question is going to be whether or not they have the ability to get it done in that timeframe or not overstressed.
And they're going to have to work around our schedule too on phase one. You know, how do we make sure it's still going to have to eat, they shut everything down? Okay. That work for everybody then, we'll proceed in that way. Okay. Anything else we need to discuss on that?
Thank you.
I'll beat you out of here quick. Look at that.
Appreciate that.
Thanks, Robert.
Okay, our next one is a budget development calendar. I just have a copy of it on the, on the computer agenda. So basically looking at, starting with, you'll start to get the information out to the principal so he can come in and meet with you, actually now, through December 13th.
Yeah, that's just the calendar. It's very similar to one we, calendar that we used last year for budget development. What I like to do is have the board approve that budget development calendar. One thing that Chris noted, we may have to get our budget to him a couple of weeks sooner this year. He's not giving me a final deadline. I did add the February 12th for the county commissioner, budget retreat, went ahead and added that to the calendar. I don't know where that's going to be, but we, we'll have an hour to discuss high school capital planning and really to talk about, I think the next step is really talk about the cost of these phase one, the scope of phase one. And I think he mentioned having DEC there, which is their financial planning group out of Charlotte who was there last year at the retreat. We could certainly have our, our new architect there to help us kind of lay, lay this out. Really then it just becomes a step-by-step process of trying, trying to get the ball rolling.
And we had mentioned, or you had mentioned at a last meeting, I think, that we still had some, some savings we needed to find this year after the COVID. Money was pulled back at some point in here, maybe March 1st to March 17th, we can start talking about that, you know, what's that looking like? Cause you obviously have done, by then you know about what's going to happen for enrollment and teachers and what they're going to do next year.
Yes, we'll have course selection guides completed by high school students. If you remember, last year we talked about a two-year plan to eliminate, reduce our budget by $4 million. A lot of that was ESSER funds and we, we have certainly hit that mark and beyond. And so this next year, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of about a million dollars to get to, to the four million mark over the two-year period. So yeah, we will, all of that work will be starting in, it's actually starting now, but once you approve this, we get this document out to the principals. They'll meet with their school improvement teams and then we'll start meeting with them. You see a calendar there where we should meet with all the schools. I think January 7th is our first meeting day.
Got a question. Comments about how the process looks?
Starting on Friday the 13th, that's on y'all, just so you know.
Hey, that used to be one of my lucky.
No, I have to say it's a good day. That's my birthday.
Okay.
Okay. So you need approval? Yes, if we can get a motion to approve this schedule, what we call a budget development calendar.
I don't agree with you.
Motion by Mr. Hutchins to approve the budget development calendar for 25, 26.
So are you approving this or are we just talking about and approving that work?
Well, this one, this one we would, well, we could, we can do it.
Look and see what you have on your paper.
It said, ask to review the budget development calendar as presented. So we don't have to make the decision tonight, today.
So we can put all these just as discussion boards?
Consent.
Consent.
Yes, this is one I probably should have put it under approval because if you, if you're good with this, what I would like to do is go ahead and send this budget development document out to my principals. It gives them a month.
Yeah.
We're asking for this back by December 13th, I believe, so Dove can then compile the Google spreadsheet so we're ready to start meeting on January 7th.
Well, I tell you what.
So I am seeking approval on this calendar tonight.
I'll make a motion. If we got two-thirds to do it, then we'll go back and amend the agenda and move this item to action item.
Okay. Well, we could still go and take action even if it's not under action item or do we need to, does it need to be under?
Okay, you can take action on anything you want.
Okay, that, that would be cleaner if we do that.
I may say something.
Okay.
Long we got two-thirds.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing is we have a motion to amend the agenda to add the budget development calendar as part of action items and then we can put it on as action item to approve the budget, a budget calendar. Does that sound right? Okay, so we have a motion. Second, you got that, Dove?
Second in by whom?
Mr. Hutchins. So, but, motion by Mr. Bledsoe. All those, are any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no? All right, so we'll put that under, we'll bring it down to four.
302.
302, yeah. Okay. But it'll be, once we get to it, that'll be pretty quick and easy because we've already proven said we approve it. Okay. All right, 203, school calendar development process.
Mr. Asher, please.
It's one afternoon?
Yeah. It's afternoon. How is everybody?
Good.
Good. So I'm, I'm here this afternoon. I think you all have this document that kind of gives us a timeline to share with you on the development of the school calendar for 2025, 2026 and just to see if you have any questions about that process.
Are we going to fight this year?
That's, that's my bet.
Depends on what, what we want to do.
That's not, are, are we going to, are we going to do that? Y'all, I mean, I'm, I'm certainly with him, like the state, I always am, but.
The question I have, we always.
Coming down with misdemeanors, the whole.
We've had three options since I've been on board and each time, one of those options has been compliance with the beginning and.
A late start.
Start date with the state. Okay. So basically this is to set the process, the advisory group to develop account, three calendars that we look at and then we're going to have to make that decision.
I, I think along with that, I would like to see your assessment or management's assessment on how that would affect if, if we, we went within the state mandated guidelines of the starting, that we assess how that would affect our students and how we might the best accommodate that.
By still going under the state.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see the effect of, how to impact that with our, I know one big issue that we had is the college starting. And we're trying to align our students to be able to take advantage by getting college courses while they're still going to high school. And if there's any remedy or way that we can not interfere with that, I'm just saying that if y'all could bring an assessment to us of how, what that would look like if we, if we did go within the state requirement. And how, or how, or simply defects of us doing that. Cause I know a big, big part of that was tuition, funds being saved by the parents in our county, citizens in our county. It was significant amount of tuition that's, that's saved by us being able to do that. And I'd hate to see, I'd like to see that as how that would be impacted.
Obviously exams have to go back to Christmas and.
Well, that's another, yeah, another big part.
To me, that's, that's the most important part. As a high school teacher, seeing when the kids come back after Christmas, the impact of them having to take an exam that they haven't seen material on for two weeks.
And, and you know, high school students right now that have college classes, their, their high school schedule meshes perfectly with their college. their, their high school schedule meshes perfectly with their college schedule right now. If, if, if the first semester carries until, say, January the twentieth, they're gonna have two, two and a half weeks or so where they have a new college schedule that may not mesh real well with their second semester college schedule. I think we might overlook that a little bit every once in a while, but that's, that's a very real.
How much of Surry Community College's enrollment as Surry County schools?
I'm not sure of that. It's very significant. Dr. Lee, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think they would be a standalone community college without us, without our students.
Maybe we ought to have that conversation. If we have followed the law, then maybe we should have, I don't know if that's ever been had before, but maybe we should have that conversation. Let's let them look at maybe adjusting their calendar to them us. I, I would think somewhere, our, our SCS is probably forty percent. Mount Airy and Oakton, I'm guessing, I probably shouldn't guess. It's, it's significant. At one point in time, I think it was, there was pretty significant. And again, I think it's ignorant that the state of North Carolina tells us when to start and stop school. But they do.
Is there not a process that we can ask for an exemption from it, like speak with legislature, with the legislature to?
There's a weather waiver. If you miss, I believe it's eight days for winter weather. Over a period of time, you can start one week prior to the August twenty-sixth.
So we had to pray for snow? And there were.
For a few years, I think.
Oh, I think it's standard.
We're asking, we're asking for results, or they're asking for results and test scores to be up, and then gonna delay them taking exams. That's the most ridiculous thing that I've ever heard in my life and, and give us, I understand they don't want us thumbing our nose at them. You know, no, we're gonna do it our way. I get that.
They get a lot of money when they run from those restaurants and hot tubs that are on the coast.
We, we go with majors as good as we can go with.
I agree with you.
I guess my only request is when you come back with the three designs or the three different options, and there is one that's following the actual law, make it as advantageous as the rest of them. Don't just put one that's, I mean, make it, or it might actually be a choice. You see what I'm saying? Because I, I think it's ignorant, but I'll have to vote no if it's not following the law.
I'll say this about if you follow the law, the letter of the law, well, it really compresses what you can do because you can't start until the Monday closest to August twenty-fifth, and you have to be finished by June the eleventh, I believe is the date, maybe I'm wrong there. It really takes away, you have very little flexibility because you really tightened the window. You know, we used to get some negative feedback when we had that calendar. For example, for the, for the number of days that we had for the holiday break, Christmas break, and things like that. But it just really compresses that calendar when you back that start date up, but you still have to finish by certain time.
And you build that in when you provide it as an option.
Yes.
I mean, you built that in.
And there, and there's a requirement of the number of days you have to have between the last day of this year and the first day of next year.
Forty-two days.
Forty-two days, so that means, there's a lot that goes into it.
How would this affect the campus and Yakima, Surry Community College campus students? Do they start the same time the students do here in Surry?
I believe Yakima's on an early start. I know Mount Airy and Oakton are both starting early.
And, and to answer a part of your question, at one point, there was twenty-seven different systems that had asked for local legislation to allow them to start early, and they won't even take it up as legislation. And they said, we don't really care what you know. We're not gonna talk about it. That's, that's what Rodney is saying.
That's very student act.
Yes, it is.
Someone needs to slap back at E.
But I'll say, I'll, I'll say two things. The individual running for office that basically threatened to send us all to jail was elected the first week he's in office, lost.
Well, there we go.
That says something. The second part though.
Wrong your map.
I, I basically, I voted for this for four years for the reasons that we just talked about, and I'll vote for it again because it's the right thing for the kid. That's, that's what I'll say because I, I don't think politics should take the place of what's best for our children, so.
And do you think they're ever gonna come arrested?
I don't know. I don't have anything to do next Wednesday.
They might be controlling things they can't control though with grants and grants.
Yeah, that, that's an issue.
You know, you never know what's behind decisions when we ask for a cap grant or other grants. You don't see the inner workings of how the decision's made like a rubric, unlike we have this rubric. I guess my, my point of it is, why do you, how can we tell our children to follow what we tell them to do? And then we turn around and say, damn, I don't like that law. Ain't gonna do it.
Well, again, I'll say, you know, I'll.
And I agree with you.
I'll direct it again. If you, if you read what the law says and what our oath says, our oath says we will support defending the Constitution of the United States and, and of this state, not inconsistent with, I do not believe that law is constitutional. So it's not consistent with the Constitution. It is not, their right in the Constitution to tell us when to start school.
Then, then the next question then has to be, do we challenge that legally? Can we challenge it legally?
Why is it called Mr. Johnson?
I'd like to talk to Mr. Johnson about that as to whether or not we can, or if we've got, how many school systems chose the early calendar?
Twenty-five, twenty-six, something like that.
If we did, if twenty-five or twenty-six got together and challenged it in court, I gotta wonder if the judge wouldn't say, I'm wondering, well, Surry County has to act in best interest of each, you know what I'm saying?
Something about he already did so, and he's got a judge, you know, he's got, you know, he's got a side down there and make a vote against him.
But what happened? It was so close to the beginning of school, they backed down and had to take it. I called and talked to the chairman of their board down there, and she said it was so close that we couldn't, there's no way we could have gone through the appeal process and still been able to go to school.
I'd love for it to be legal because I want, I, I took that same moment to everybody else here too, you know what I'm saying? I want it to be, but I want it to be right too.
Let's move on.
Yeah, so, so basically, everybody's good with the process they'll go through, and then we'll have three options like we've always had. And you'll explain to us when you come back with them, based on this committee, what were your thoughts going into it?
Sure, we'll, we'll go through three, all three options in detail, which I'll ask you any questions that you may have, and then, of course, there'll be time for public comment for a month as well. Let me just, Neil, you already have a calendar, you've got December twelfth, you've got a meeting on your calendar to meet with this task force?
We're gonna have it complete by later.
Okay, so if you'll send me an email on the date, board members, you're welcome to come to that meeting. He's gonna have a principal from each level. I know it says each district, but I assume you meant an elementary, middle, and high. I mean, they can be from each district, and a teacher, an elementary, middle, and a high teacher. Though, I told him to get with Dove and get a list of my teachers on the advisory council. Those are our Teachers of the Year's who are, have a lot of experience. And you're welcome to come to that meeting and, and hear the conversation around the calendar and the pros and cons of each.
Have you had a parent on that committee before?
We have not, that I remember, not since I've been here.
It'd be hard to pick one out of all this county, but I think it'd be a, a good idea.
I can throw out an invitation to parent advisory council members if they'd like to, to come.
Because I think when you come back to us and say, we have a parent on this committee, and this is what they recommend, that all carries some weight. Yeah, in my mind it would.
And once, once the, the three are adopted, you do, we do put those out for public consumption, public comment. And we got a lot of feedback in years past, so this one, one thing. You're gonna get inputs, so by the time you see, on, by January twentieth, you should have drafts, comments, and I think last year we had almost five hundred people that.
Yeah, that was.
That submitted, submitted, you know, their comments on the calendar document.
Okay, so I'm hearing consensus to go with the process, come back to this, so we can talk about the calendar, and then we wanna have it approved. Right, what was the?
January twentieth.
January twentieth, right, so it gives us the December and the January meetings to talk about.
Sure.
Got it, okay. Thank you, appreciate it, Neil. Okay, request proposal in the English to ELA textbooks. I didn't realize it had been since two thousand sixteen, since we have. Hello, how y'all doing?
Yeah, Eric said he's a man of his head, so he.
I'm trying. I'm trying, okay. All right, so it's time for us to consider our, our request for proposal, and, and I'm guessing there's only a certain number of companies out there big enough to be able to produce textbooks for school systems that can work this. And I saw you had what, what we use now is Huffington. We also potentially go with, what was the other one? McGraw-Hill. So those are some, I guess, that we probably would receive requests from or proposals?
Yes.
So we got money from the state. We need to update them to where they're phonics-based approach.
Now, I will say, you know, we purchased Letterland to cover phonics and phonemic awareness. So for elementary, the only other components we need updated resources for would be comprehension and vocabulary. So we do have phonics taken care of, so ours won't be an overarching need as Millen High School would. But yes, we do have the funds, you know, there are funds allocated for textbooks each year, and that's the only thing that can be spent on. And of course, I would say too, it's textbooks, and it could also be digital resources as well, that the funds are there to, to purchase.
So is our only unknown land, was the state funds covering the cost, or do we know whatever the cost comes in a little bit, the state's gonna pay for it? So don't we get an amount each year, and we bank it if we need to, to spend?
Yes, and, and ours has rolled over.
Okay, so we got them, okay.
We did, yeah.
I make the motion of approval.
Motion to approve the request for proposal being sent out to, for ELA textbooks.
You made approval today or?
Yeah, so everyone is, everyone is consenting, they're just going to consent agenda, but yes.
But it says to add to review and consider the request to issue the RFP, so that you can get it, get it sent out, right? And get the.
So is it time-sensitive that you can't do it in December?
No, you can approve it. On the timeline, on the back, we have that it would be, we're asking just for approval in December. We just wanted to make you aware for this one, this meeting, work session, but there's a timeline on the back for everything that we need.
So then you would issue it in January, proposals come in March, February, March, okay.
And this is for school year starting August two thousand twenty-five?
Yes.
So these, these textbooks are already being, they're, they're there. I mean, you are, we're not gonna ask them to produce one. We're gonna use what they've got, and we're gonna select what works best for us.
Yes, it's possible that your high school teachers could want a digital resource only, such as Common Lit. That's possible, so we, when we submit that RFP, then we will get all kinds of things coming in that we'll review. And of course, teachers will be the ones reviewing this materials, these materials. They'll be the ones that are gonna make the deciding choices of what they like and what they would like to have, and.
I'm sorry, Ken, you had a question?
I guess anytime we get, we purchase a new textbook, is it? How, does it make public or, but it's available to the public for public to review or look at?
I know curriculums are, I know curriculums are.
Our curriculum is always public-facing. The textbook samples, if someone wanted to request to review it, we would have samples for anyone to review that.
I think that was in the, the new law, wouldn't it, acquire the practical rights and, and we'd make it available to them what they wanted.
It would be available. We will have so many samples that it would be available for them. They send us many samples, so when this happens.
Okay, how many teachers will be on the committee?
Typically, what we have done in the past is with the McGraw-Hill math textbooks, they had at least one from each grade level and each school zone. So if you had a sixth-grade teacher from the east, the central, and the north, a seventh-grade teacher from the east, the central, and the north, so forth, with math textbooks. I remember that because I was on that committee as a principal. So that's typically how we do it. We try to involve as many teachers, stakeholders as we can, and there's a rubric that they will go through and read and follow and give lots of feedback. And we do ask for them to give authentic feedback because this is a resource they're choosing, that they feel like that they can use and make great decisions with. So that's typically what it looks like.
Most of the time, those teachers will go back and get feedback from their respective grade levels.
Yes.
So lots of eyes have been put on the textbooks before making that final decision. We love it when they all make the same decision, but sometimes that doesn't, that's not the case. And so there's some, it has, there's some back and forth, or at least it has been in the past.
And typically, our schools will get the samples to review, so not just certain teachers. Everybody would have some type of opportunity to review it. They might just send their feedback to a specific person, yes.
And when we make a selection for English two textbook, all our schools will use the same textbook. Each school might have it, okay.
So the next step after the textbook is adopted is then the pacing guides and instructional resources, all that has to do with it. So curriculum writing team will come in behind to update all of the pacing guides and resource documents to align with the new textbooks.
Companies typically provide all of our professional development around how to access, if there's digital resources that go along with it, which now there are always, you'll always find digital resources for them. So the PD is always provided by the company, the people who know exactly how to get in there and use it. So that's a really great opportunity for our teachers as well.
You're really specific on the request for purchase, what we want. So we're not gonna get a lot of different samples, we're gonna get focused, okay? Okay, so everybody good with putting that on the consent agenda for December?
It says your request for purchase, so we don't make, we don't make, don't really purchase them tonight.
This just starts the review.
I realize, it says agenda, but it says there the request for purchase.
Is that request for proposal?
But that's what you're gonna see, you're gonna see that again in December, the same document. They're just showing, there's a preview tonight.
And this, yeah, this starts the process to, got it, okay? Anything else from anybody on that before we move on? Kinda stay on Mr. Hudson's timeline here.
AIG plan. You should get in two minutes.
Look at that, thank you. We got, we got some pressing issues. We gotta get across the street before we talk.
We understand. This won't be quick as well. This is our AIG year for our plan rewrite with the state. You have to rewrite a academically and intellectually gifted plan every three years. And I did include the Article nine B from the state on there, on the link, so that you can review that as well. And what we are asking for here is just, well, just the awareness that we need an advisory council. And of course, we've listed who we would need on this advisory council. This is per state guidance. And then, of course, we've listed the responsibilities and then the timeline. So we really just wanted to make you aware that we need to get this work started for this advisory council to get together to review the former plan and feedback that we received from the state so that we can rewrite our new plan. The new plan, we would hope to have it written with all stakeholders and reviewed in time for board approval in May. That's our ultimate goal. And then, of course, there would be training and anything else that needed to be provided at that time during the summer or before school starts with our teachers and implemented in August. The implementation would begin in August for the new plan.
Would you like to go a board member today or?
It, we're good if you wanna talk about it in late, that's fine, but we just wanted to make sure that we can get this scheduled. We would love to have an advisory meeting in December.
So probably, maybe you want to let more members serve on this council. Will, in the new AIG plan, will there be separate AIG classes for these kids, or are they interwoven in in regular classes?
So in middle school, and Margaret, if you wanna talk about elementary first, then I'll talk about middle and high. That way it's an easy. So in elementary, we do have a designated person who supports the AIG students. So they would actually typically come out of the classroom to an AIG teacher for a period of time. Certain days of the week, depending on whether they're served in reading, math, or in both, and, and they would come out. They might also have times in the classroom that they work with their enrichment materials provided by that teacher as well, but they are served outside the classroom.
Okay, so that, like, we used to, we. Okay, so that like we used to do, we'd come out.
Yes.
Go to a separate room, have our class, and then come back and join our.
Yes.
Okay.
And they don't miss core instruction when they do that. They would come out during a time that would be a differentiated block in the classroom anyway, where students are having these particularly.
So in middle school, we do not have a resource pullout time for AIG services. What we do have is, you have seen the compacted math classes. Most of the kids do travel with their compacted math peers unless they're twice exceptional, meaning they could be AIG in math, but they can have a learning disability in reading. So they would not be with those students again. Also, depending on how many gifted learners there are in middle school, they're clustered in groups of five or more. But you could have two teachers that are serving AIG kids in clusters of five or more, which is the requirement. So those teachers, our math teachers are almost what I would call inherently teaching AIG because of the compacted math curriculum. With English language arts, there's not a compacted curriculum. So our ELA teachers will have to have some professional development with gifted services. Which strategies, you know, how to do that. In high school, this is our honors courses. So they're just served in honors. So it looks a little bit different at each level.
Okay, thank you. How often do we assess, are they assessed once in the, elementary, once in middle, one in high? Or once in elementary and it stays with them forever? How does that work?
So we start identification with them in the spring of their second grade year to begin the nurture process. Margaret, is that correct? Then we have also started, since 2021, we have been giving the COGAT, which is the cognitive abilities test, also to sixth graders in the fall because we wanted to catch any students who may not have scored very well on the COGAT in second grade. So this test is very unique. It's a test where there's lots of dots that look like hole punches in how papers folded. Some of our second graders may not know how to take that test, if we're being fair. So are we really missing kids between second and fifth grade if we don't reassess? And so any student who's not already identified as academically gifted, they will take the COGAT in sixth grade in the fall. So if they're already identified, they don't, they don't take it again. But we try to give another chance to take that test once they've experienced it one time. And they've had some classes where they may be served in compacted math. They don't have to be gifted to be served in compacted math. They may be a high-flying student, but then we may pick up grade that, wow, this kid is academically and intellectually gifted. And where this matters is when they get to high school and how soon they can take CCP courses. So we are really trying to make sure that we are covering all of our bases when it comes to meeting the needs of all children in our district, whether exceptional or gifted.
There could be a situation where a parent requests a readministration between that second grade year and sixth grade year. That, that happens on occasion. Thank you.
So as far as, as a board member, you want to make your statement or you want to identify the council or the group, November, December? So if we were able to select one in December, it's the second of December, then be okay with the schedule?
Absolutely.
So what I would ask, because if anybody's interested, think about it, let us know when we come back together in December. We can make the decision that night, give you the name, and then that'd be the only thing, open us up.
That would be great.
Good? Okay, any other questions or comments? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
You're doing well, appreciate it. I've done that before. Yeah, that's right, because I've been one of them. Yeah, okay. Cell phone policy. All right, here we go. So we've got some high school principals here.
We've got a couple of high school principals that are going to join us for this conversation.
Good.
So you've got our policy, and then you've got a copy of the cell phone use survey responses. Dr. Badgett, thank you for being here. I know Ms. Holloway was going to join us. I think she had a school improvement team meeting this afternoon. She was going to leave just a little bit early from. So I know we've had a conversation over the last couple of meetings and I thought, I thought this, we said we would bring it back to today's work session for further discussion. So I guess I'll just turn it over to the board for, for discussion and questions.
Did everybody have a chance to read their comments, the principals? Okay, good. I thought that was pretty telling. It's not really, most cases, it's not what's going on in the school is the problem. Could be that the other things outside of the school are the issue that's not going to, we're not going to solve that with a, any school policy, but I think it's definitely something to discuss. So any questions, comments?
There is kind of a statewide heading toward that to begin with. And I keep hearing it over and over and over again.
Yep.
And then I'm hearing a lot from teachers saying that. Are we, is it in the policy and we're just not following the policy? Or are we following it? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Our policy says that it's up, the principals can, if I move it correctly, the principals can decide at their schools if they have them.
We solved any of the comments?
Yeah, it's. Our, our policy allows each individual principal the discretion to basically establish a cell phone policy within their school. And I'll give you a good example of why there's not a consistent policy. The early college, if Dr. White was here with, they're obviously on a college campus and many of the professors, it's just a different, it's just a different campus. Our two comprehensive high school principals here today, both have cell phone policies. You want to?
Yeah, what are they?
What are they, Ms. Holloway? Start with your cell phone policy and how it's enforced.
Sure. So our teachers, we have lock boxes, we have cell phone holders, kind of like shoe holders in our classrooms. So teachers have discretion, they can have students put those cell phones in those lock boxes or shoe holders. Some teachers have students just keep the cell phones put up. But cell phones should not be out during instructional time unless there's an instructional activity like Kahoot or an instructional game like that. So if a cell phone comes out, then teachers can take those, they can send those to the front office and a student can come get that at the end of the day. If it's more than one offense, then a parent has to come get that phone. But that's, that's been what we've been doing.
How often does that happen? They actually bring the phone to you on the office?
Probably once a day. Maybe, maybe not once a day, maybe two times a week. We had one today. But it's not widespread.
So policy is that you make your, you make the decision on the cell phone at your particular school? And you've chosen to let the teacher make the decision for that particular classroom? Is that the way, am I hearing that?
Yes, sir. Cell phones are put up, but a teacher can have discretion, shoe holder, the lock box, or phones can stay in the bags as long as they're not out.
Okay, so how they're put up is the teacher's, not their.
That's their discretion. Yes, sir.
They may have to be put up, the teachers decide how?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying, I'm trying to follow.
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Badgett?
Yes. Ours is not much different than that either. Our school improvement team decided that we would put our cell phones up. We either dock them in a designated location in the classroom, whether that's changing out a calculator for a cell phone or a computer, when they come get their computer, they dock their cell phones. And the only time that they're allowed to use them in class is if it's for instructional purposes. Kahoot's a good example, like a game, a review game is a good example of that. If a teacher takes it during the class period, the first time, at the end of the class period, the cell phone's released back to the student, second time, turned into the front office. Then at the end of the day, the cell phone is issued back to the student and then repeated offense, a parent has to come pick it up. And the times that the parents have come picked it up, they have given it right back to the student.
When they pick it up, are they restricted from bringing it back the next day or?
No, sir.
It's just to have the parent, trying to reinforce your policy with parents?
Yes, sir.
I noticed in your comment, and I think it's something we've talked about in meetings we've had, is you, you might have the policy, but the consistency in implementing it by the teacher may be something to issue. Is that?
That, that could be the consistency, yes.
Okay.
I would even dare say with substitutes coming in. That, that seems to be where some of the, where it gets a little sticky is maybe the routine of the classroom teacher looks a little different when the substitute teacher comes in.
Not like a student will ever take advantage of that either, right?
No, never.
I didn't have a cell phone, I'm too old.
No, I didn't have a phone in school. Our middle school principals, the middle school policy are very similar. It's just they take it up at 8:00 AM and give the phone back at 3:00 PM. High school students schedule changing classes 90 minutes, four times a day. That, that's virtually impossible to implement the same type of, same type of.
Leaving campus for college class and going back to get it, yeah.
So we have a consistent policy for all three high schools? Is he serves the same one?
Yep.
And all middle schools is the same? For the most part, I think if, if, you know, Molly and Matt for sure. I think all four are pretty much the same. I don't know if they take them up at Gentry and deliver them back at the end of the day. It may be what's in there, Met of you too. I just, the conversations, obviously, I think on occasion you have problems with cell phones, but in general, is there a problem with cell phones?
I think it depends on the day.
Yeah.
I mean, we've had, it depends on the moon cycle. You know, last week with the super moon, I know you guys have probably heard that before with full moons and that sort of thing. It really depends on the day. Sometimes, yes, we may have instances where students are disrespectful to staff and not want to give their phone up. And we may have an instance of cyber bullying, but it's not, I wouldn't say it's a widespread problem. I would say it's a case-by-case basis.
Would it be, in your opinion, now this is if it was a board decision that was made and y'all aren't the bad guys, but would it be beneficial to your staff and your school if cell phones were not allowed?
Not allowed as in the middle campus?
I mean, we get specifics, but I'm just saying, are cell phones a negative for you? And you can be honest.
I think if you were to ban cell phones in schools, we would have a bigger problem. Currently, it's a case-by-case, smaller issue. And if they were banned, you would see like burner phones or a sanke phone. Like there, there would be ways that students would work the system to get around banned phones. I think the biggest thing that we have seen at North Surrey to be in our favor is not having guest access to the internet. That has cut down a lot on our cell phone usage because a lot of our cell phones are not based off of plans. They're, they're based off of the internet. So that's helped us.
And that has helped us some too. Of course, if students use their data, the guest access is a midpoint. I will say, as always, we would abide by any policy that's handed down. I can see pros and cons either way.
We would abide by it, but I think it would be a bigger.
Challenge, a bigger challenge.
Causes and effects.
If we're sending our cell phones.
They're going to do that.
You know, I can use an example of something close to that. And they know how much I hated vapes when I was teaching. I called a student in the hall, in a bathroom, using one more time. And I'm walking into the office with it. So he takes it out of his mouth and puts it in his pocket. And as we're walking up to the hall, I said, give me the vape, I'm taking it too. So he pulls something out of the other pocket. About 15 minutes later, I realized, I didn't think of it when he was doing it. He found a way, he put the good one back in his right pocket and gave me the one that was already empty to bring up and turn into the office. So he found a way around the system and he worked me that time, but he didn't work me a second time. That could be an example of some way finding ways around it. I, I had a teacher the other day, I brought this up and I said, I know we've got an issue. How do we, how do we best address it? And I said, you know, we've talked about putting it up, you know, putting the computer, the calculator thing on the wall. And she said to me, well, easy. You take attendance based on whether that phone is in that bag or not. If it's not in there, you ain't here, whether you are or not. If you've not put your phone in that, you're not here that day.
And that's the question I'm asking, is that what we need? Do we need to get that particular about our policy? Do we need to get to the place where we say, if that phone isn't here, you're not here? Because it seems, that's, that's pretty particular.
Yeah, it is.
You know, I'm, I'm in and out of a classroom every day, all day long, in and out. And to be honest with you, by the time I haven't seen the kids with them and under the desk, and y'all know, we all know what happens. I've also sat back and seen my kids back there, they're, they're busy doing what they've been given to do and look up and see the picture there, doing exactly the same thing, playing video game or whatever. Do we need to get particular enough that we say, none? We don't trust the adults, you understand what I'm saying? But if you hear people, if you hear people talking, that's, that's exactly what they're thinking. Ban them outright, if you ban them outright, we have none of the problems.
But I like the, the idea of you take attendance based on if your phone is, is put up and.
I wonder if you get to bring a school one?
If they have cell.
Of course, they don't forget that much, I don't know.
No, they won't forget that.
Or if you do that, then they have two cell phones, so they'll put one in the thing. The one that doesn't work and the holder and the other one with them.
I just don't want to not address the problem because we're afraid of what the kids may do. That's why we have these situations, because a lot, I've had the accountability at home. And teachers and staff have to deal with those actions from lack of accountability at home and have to turn in the babysitters during the day instead of educators.
We came and visited North, I, I thought Darren had a great approach to it, where he's got the, it was called a guitar case. Okay, if that's what it is, but, and it's got chargers in it. And the students had to put their phones in that guitar case with a charger and they could see it. They, they weren't having the withdrawals. But if they had to lose, and that's, I'm telling you, there's someday going to be a PTSD diagnosis for kids that don't have their phone with them. But so, and then if there was an emergency and had to leave, they closed it up, took it with them. And that way they all had them with them. But I think that's, that's a great innovative approach and every teacher, I think, has them. My concern is, and again, I've told you more before, when I was teaching, you had one student that was just constantly doing it and 23 that weren't, and am I going to spend my whole class period fighting with that one? Or am I going to teach the others? And that's a tough decision to make.
Do you all see a need for policy change? We're watching that right now.
Not necessarily. I don't think a policy change, but maybe a best practice reinforcement. And I think that, that's.
If the board asks the principals to reinforce to teachers that we want those things put away when they're in class?
Well, it looks like there's not any consequences, but I mean, it looks first time, I think it can give a teacher second time by ringing it up. Just a, and third time, you call a parent and the parent gives it right back to them. Is it something like you ban them three days or five days, you can't bring it period at all? Would that make it worse?
But then again, how will we know?
Hard to enforce.
They got it in a backpack. We're not going to, I don't think we're going to search a backpack for a cell phone. I mean, it's not like it's a weapon.
Well, someday they're going to get towards that follow, wouldn't they?
Yeah.
That's the problem right there.
I think a lot of cell phone problems is off-campus. Majority of them is.
I have had parents before say, well, they can check it in the front office and just leave it there the whole school day and then come back and pick it up when the parents are tired of, you know, having to deal with it too. Because of, you know, inconvenience is them having to come to school.
It was kind of late and a lot of times I forget to go to the courthouse and get one, you get something, go back to the car.
But I do think you made a good point, we reinforce it during the sub-training, this and our cell phone policy, because those students will use it.
They'll know, okay. Well, our teachers, they let us keep. I heard that. Okay, well.
I think the principal is in the best position to make those decisions, that's just my opinion, so.
And I did see something in the ADN C today about the state considering.
They all still in the period.
But I do, I do believe the principals are in the best base position to do it. But I just, I want, I want teachers, if you've got a policy, you've got fifty teachers. How do you make sure all fifty are supporting that policy?
Well, continuous misuse of a cell phone is no longer a cell phone issue. It becomes insubordination. And then that's where you start looking at the discipline plan, which does look a little bit different. Like after school detention, ISS.
Gotcha. So there are part of the consequences after.
But it wouldn't be necessarily a cell phone, it's insubordinate or not following local school rules.
In my mind, it would just, it seems it would be better if we just had, if it was just, we're all going to do it this way. You know, if every teacher does it different. Then the kids, this, this one, I know I can get away with it here, I can't get away with it here. If, at what point do we have to be the bad guy and say, that's it, that's enough of that? And we're not going to come up with an answer here tonight.
No, no, no. And I get, I understand the need for cell phones. Like, my daughter has one. Although I hate it, but she does. But like she called me this morning and I had to take her computer back to school. Now, she could have used the phone in the front office, because we have phones in Surrey County School that they can use. But it just bothers me some of the bullying that I've seen in her tell of that happens during the day via phone. TikTok video made here today, you know, and that's. I don't like that.
We're not going to stop it tonight.
But I did, I think it's very important that we got your perspective on it because obviously two of our just high schools in the county. And having, you've got the most students to deal with. So that's, that's good that you let us know how you see it. So it sounds like somewhere maybe strengthen it a little bit, but not go overboard by throwing out, maybe it's bad.
So maybe we see it as a bigger, or hear it as a bigger issue than what you all see as it is. That are actually there. Nice point.
I'll say this, in the last, how long have you been doing what you're doing for docking phones? Last two to three years? One to two years?
Yes, yeah, last one or two years.
Yes, before COVID.
So what I've seen, more the schools have adopted this docking phone mentality. So when I'm there on school visits, I, I don't see that many cell phones out. And I'm looking for them. And I realize you may see a kid under the, I'm looking for that.
Well, they're not going to have it out when you walk through.
Yeah, but ninety-five percent of our kids, when we go in the classroom, are doing exactly what the teacher is asking them to do.
Told you I'd say it. Okay, anything else you would like us to know about? I did, and I do think we need to probably think about the difference between phones and earbuds. Because once you put the phone up, what's the earbud any good for, right? Because doesn't it run off the phone? So do they turn the music on and just let it play when they put it up? And I've heard parents to say that, you know, the insubordination could come with. We got, well, about me, you don't even listen to the teacher or any, that to me is a bigger issue than.
Yeah, that's one of the things.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, if something we're going to have to discuss?
Further discussion.
Further discussion, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate you coming over. And look at that, we got you out of here about fifteen and Tony.
But I did like to get a thing on this.
Well, I think, I think we can catch back up on this.
Exactly.
But I think we've sort of got a consensus on what we like to do. And so basically, we've got a lot of policy coming up that's, we're required to take some action or at least review. So Dr. Reeves, you have a recommendation for us?
Board members, you can see in Agenda Item 2.07, those are the policies from the spring and summer. And there we have, there are six required policies, three strongly recommended, five recommended. In the fall and winter in Agenda Item 2.08, there's sixteen required, two strongly recommended, seven recommended. And we dissolved the policy committee. And when you take a look at the work between all those policies, it really is probably, it's, we can dedicate, we would have to dedicate a couple of hours just for the work session, just to deal with those individual policies. And Mr. Blitso, you served on that committee and know that that was kind of a, we had a rolling once a month meeting. My recommendation would be, let's take the six required spring, summer policies, focus on those six. And then second step would be to focus on the sixteen required in the fall and winter. Some of those policies, it's just a minor tweak, minor change. Some require a little bit more, kind of knock those out, step one, step two. And then come back to the strongly recommended, strongly recommended in both the spring and fall. That'd be my recommendation, just to try to knock, to whittle this down a little bit at a time. But really, I'm looking for direction from the board on how do you want to proceed in policy? Just, just how do you want to proceed really tackling this, this volume of work? That would help me just note our next step.
Okay, what we have to address, we got to get caught back up, so what would you?
My suggestion, I think initially when we started doing the monthly work sessions, in theory, it was good. It did allow us all to get some information, but I think as we move further, I think it becomes cumbersome and has situations like this. So I would propose that in December, we bring up those six, let them sit for the thirty days they're required. In January, we bug on them. But then starting in January, we go back and have five committees. Policy, finance, safety, building the grounds and curriculum.
The same five.
The same five we had. Every board member chairs one committee. And, and that way we don't get into this situation. And I understand, I mean, we've had a lot to go over every work session that we've had. We're down in the assistant superintendent, so I feel like it would help you all, it would help all of us to go back to committees. And, you know, we can, we can choose who's on the committee as a board and with the input of Dr. Reeves and Kevin, who to put on there and decide what committees we want to be on. And that would be my recommendation, so that way we don't have this movement.
So we carry it over to December to the discussion, is that what we're saying? And then that's set for thirty minutes and then?
Thirty days.
Action, or thirty days in action in January.
He would present us the six policies in December that we got to make a decision on. And then go thirty days, January, we'd come back and then from there forward, look at. And then that way Raleigh will be in place and we can start to look at it.
I would be willing to serve again and do the policy committee if y'all want me to.
So, so the only thing I would, and I like the approach, the only thing I'd ask is that if we think about while we went to that and how do we address it going back to the committees? Is there anything that we did, the reason we went to this meeting, that we did it for certain reasons that we need to think about as we go back to committees? Yes, open it up there, right? If you want to come to the policy committee, you're there. That way you're not out feeling like you're out, you know?
Yeah, I mean, anybody come to, and I would go as far, and it may become cumbersome, it may be a different way of to do it, but I would go as far as if you want to, to video your committee meetings.
So you could look back at them, yeah?
Or audio recording, I mean, you know, it's easier, audio recording, if, if you wanted to. So, you know, like if you wanted to be there but couldn't, whatever. I mean, that's not a necessity, but.
So you read the beach.
Can't send a robot, it's a base somewhere.
So Mr. Blitso, would this be where that committee would report during the work session?
Now, we would deal away with work sessions.
Because we go back to the old structure. Oh, just one Monday. So what I'd like to, you know, what do y'all think about that? Now, we've done it for a year. I like the, I like the fact that we got so much information, but I was going to most of the committees anyway. So I was hearing a lot of the same information. And what I am most concerned about is those six-hour meetings we've had. Is it really worth the time that we're asking the staff to be here and us to be here? Are we getting enough benefit from that? Is it legal to post an update? Say, say, because I did building the grounds. And I got through with that building and grounds committee, then get on here, send a message to everyone, board members, so, so on. Here's what we did, so, so on. And then send that out, is that legal? Or is that considered a meeting if you have a discussion?
It's not legal, it's just public record.
I think it's information versus trying to. I think that'd be. So if, depending on what committee you're on, you get done with your committee meeting and then you give an update to the rest of the board right then, that way they're already expecting it coming into the next meeting. Here's what we did, this is what we decided.
They can prepare any questions they may have.
I tend to like that, that way at least coming in, I get, my mind gets so blocked up between that school and this school, you know what I'm saying? So if I ain't got it in my mind all the time, I tend to kick it over into another file that says I don't really need to worry about it, because somebody else has already got it. And I don't want to do that. I want to start, my thing is I want to pick out. Can y'all think of any reason or things that we might have to think about going back to it? Sounds like the consensus is going back to it. How do we make sure that we don't fall back on some of the same issues we had before? That would be one way to address it and then.
Well, I think when Dr. Cobble and Buddy Collins came and met with the board, they, they talked about helping, you know, transition to the work session. And part of that discussion was about trust between the board, communication. I just think whatever we do, the communication needs to be open.
Absolutely.
To that, to that point, you know, either the board member needs to submit that, send that out, or we need to take minutes and have a consistent way to disseminate minutes from the meeting. You're not asking for action, you're just basically communicating the minutes from the meeting and what happened, what transpired. You know, there's really, at the committee meeting, sometimes there are going to be recommendations asked from the committee. For example, the auxiliary services committee in the past is taking care of the county. Mr. Lawrence served on that. Buildings and grounds, you know, in the past, we would have, we would have worked directly with buildings and grounds to bring an architect back to the board. The policy committee will bring those recommendations. It, I think, will help speed up some of the work because there's a lot of work to be done and you can see policies have stacked up. But often, when Dr. Danlin was here, there would be things with the curriculum committee that she needed action on, you know, like the textbook stuff, you heard it tonight, that, I mean, they're ahead. I mean, they're, they're ahead. I think one thing that this process has, has helped the directors and I do is really think, we're thinking three, four, five, six months ahead, which is, that's, that's not been a bad thing. I just think we got to keep our communication lines open and keep the meetings open. I mean, they're obviously, have always been open to board members, but when, you know, committees are taking action, that's up to the board as to how, you know, is whoever that chair is. I mean, I guess that's that person's role to bring that recommendation back to the board. And there's trust with the board to trust that committee. And the, all that's been vetted and the questions have been asked. And there's teachers, principals classify on each one of those committees. We tried to pick people from, represented from the east district, the central district, the north district. Tried to have a principal, classified person, a teacher, you know. We could work with individual board members to determine who those folks are. We always try to pick experienced folks. So I think the committee work is a way to get the work done, especially in a district our size.
And to be honest with you, I, I believe, I think that's one of the things we're lacking now, is not having that input from the teachers and the principals. Just because we didn't, there's not enough time to get all that done and to be, be have our work sessions. So I would, I would appreciate having that input.
One, one issue was, you know, we had, so one of the board members came to one of those committee meetings, you know, the influence that board had on the committee. I think. You know, if you've got, just say you've got three board members or you got four of them.
Well, and I think if they're there for information, that's, that's the same thing, right?
But there's a direct influence in, in trying to steer a committee in a certain direction.
It's a great way to remake the forum, so we got to.
That would be a problem, but I don't think that ever happened. Not in any committee meetings at all, is it?
And I, and I, I mean, I brought that up at some of the committee meetings. I just wanted to make sure it didn't. And I didn't see it happening, but I just throw it out. So, but now Buddy and Larry, I think they said one of the reasons they never had this other issue is because if they had a seven-member board, they normally had four board members on a committee. So the majority of, already knew what the issue was.
Yeah, they did say that.
So. Letting the staff and their opinion matter as much as anybody else's when they come in. Because it's got to be, it's got to be first. Otherwise, they can't be going to say, okay, it's okay, whatever you want. That ain't going to, that, it won't do any good.
I tell you, if we have, you know, we as a board choose the members of the committees with, with the input of the staff, it's a fresh start. This is what we're doing and, and everybody, like you said, we do the, we do meeting minutes at every meeting. And we send it right to the board after we have a committee meeting. And that way if a board member has questions, they can go ahead and be prepared for the next meeting. But their meetings are open to everybody.
Okay, so just go back to the old format. Zoom format.
And maybe I, I could prepare a template that's consistent for each committee to just fill in the blanks.
With the items discussed, the recommendations.
Items discussed, you've got an agenda, who's present.
Why did we go away from that thoroughly?
I, I think the, the issue of trust was part of it.
Me and Ken.
You know, I thought that worked well, having the committees and have the chairman committee and the chairman's committee will come in and report to the board, what they have any questions, talk with the chairman.
And I like the fact that we would be doing it, what I don't want to do is ask the assistant superintendent or curriculum or Doug to take the minutes and get it out. I think we do it. So, so what I'm hearing, if it's okay with everybody, we go ahead and get set up for the six policies at the December meeting, where Raleigh will be sitting, and we say, okay, going forward, is this how we want to set up our committees? And by January, have those appointed and in place. And then we go back to, with some improvements, with the way we did the committees before.
Maybe you try to find, put somebody on that committee that's had some experience, like TJ that experienced finances and insurance. Do right on the finance committee.
I think that'd be a good Raleigh committee.
Well, that'd be a good Raleigh committee, at least the same today. Well.
He's been, he's been a treasurer for enough of those days. He's so, and but, you know, and that's.
But I appreciate you, Colin.
But we, but we did sit down, you remember that first year we sat down and I asked each of you, what would you like to be part of? What we could do then is do that as a board.
Yeah, I think we need to do that. When we have our last work session in mid-December and we say as a board, what do we feel like we want to do, where are our strengths?
And a big help, I mean, athletics, it's having all those athletic records and everything. High schools come in and say, I'm talking to you about this and working this and all.
And then we just plan for that.
You're learning more about the committee, I don't.
I want to deer hunting committee.
Well, really, it was fun out there by Buddy.
It was.
There's some options.
I think, I think it did, it did have some useful parts. The only thing is twice a month now and getting six, five and six-hour meetings almost every time we come together.
I also want to bring out this, in, in the year, the past year, we have come together. You've started a steering committee for strategic planning, now we're into action planning. So there's a lot of work been done, really in long view kind of work with this strategic plan, mission, vision, values, that I think is going to pay rich dividends for the school system once it's all done. But it's, I think the work you've done as a board has helped you take a step forward, getting that next step done with strategic planning.
And I do believe we're still going to have to have special call meeting. Just don't have to have one every month, I just believe. All right, so if everybody's good with that, we'll, we'll push forward with that. Be ready next, at the December meeting to start looking at those policies that we need to address. Okay, board, is this, if this isn't a handful to get your hands around? So it looks like East Surrey, Surrey Central and Mount area will all be in one conference. Or one classification. Classification. Conferences won't be determined for this coming.
Conferences won't be determined for at least a couple of months.
So it's looking like for me, North Surrey is gonna be Ash County all the way to Harbor?
I think they'll have to split conferences, I don't know how they're gonna do this, uh, with all the classifications, but that's just. Information we received last week, as far as the A D M and the classifications, they went to an eight. System as opposed to four, so they doubled that, and really, I think that was to bridge the gap between the high school and. The school that had the largest A D M to the lowest A D M in two A, which is a big difference, or three A or four A, trying to.
I had no.
Make that range a little bit smaller.
We got three, three schools in North Carolina have over three thousand students. Irish Park, eight, Audrey, Ar, Ardrick, Kell, and inland, and then. I noticed there are some early colleges that are not ours.
We don't, we don't.
But I mean, the, I don't think all those other early colleges could be, could have athletic teams, could they?
Oh, yeah, they could, they wanna cut it, yes.
But, but if you're looking at one A, I'd hate to be a public education institution in one A, because they're almost all charter schools. So they're gonna pick and choose their enrollment.
Because the first one went down over the years or something, because it's, I mean, we were.
It adjusts.
One A or two A at Surrey Central when I was there, you know, had way more kids.
It adjusts, yes.
So they basically take, how many, say you got eight hundred schools, two hundred are gonna be one A, two hundred are gonna be.
Okay.
Whatever, but now with eight?
And some of these schools probably in one A might not have been in existence. Just a few years ago, they're, they're nowhere, when, you know, you didn't have some of these, these academies and all of that back from.
Mr. Bloodsoe, that's resolved school choice and the development of charter schools.
Well, you really spread out.
Last twenty years.
Sizes, right, from, one's got twenty-four for a school of the death up to three thousand?
It's this three A, Surrey Central, three A.
Well, in our school, they were three A.
Four Suries.
Surrey Central.
Four A.
So it looks like, for, for example, uh, four A.
So I would have three A and one's four.
Paul Bush. Say North's four A, they're four A.
Yes.
Niners three A.
But they're a low four A, uh, if you look at Rigsboro, but, I mean, at eight eleven, they're gonna also be in the same classification as a Highbryton with nine hundred and fifty kids. And Highbryton's always been a powerhouse in every.
Down here, you know, you have three A in this.
Okay, so this is our.
I just wanted, we just got this last week, we wanted to make you aware of, you probably hear people talking about it. We did have a, a meeting last week with all the high school principals and high school athletic directors. Just to do what you said, Mr. Goins, we talked about safety, we talked about metal detectors and the usage, we kind of debriefed from the football season. And now we, we kind of talked about basketball and how they're gonna handle all that, we talked about, uh, reclassification. Um, and a couple other, uh, other items when it comes to, uh, athletics, so that, that was a helpful meeting, last week was a good meeting.
Okay, any question? Looks like we're gonna have a choice, we're gonna have to.
Uh, I think within the next couple of months, we'll get some information on conferences, and then that'd be a period where people can. You know, voice their opinion.
So do they, at that same level, they're the ones that decides on whose conferences geographically work?
That is correct.
Okay, so we could have some split three A, four A.
Looking at it, I just don't know how they can do it without splitting some conferences up because of travel. Seems like that'd be pretty tough.
Yeah, I don't think this is just information, I don't.
No, this is information for.
Yeah, sometimes it doesn't make sense, but, okay. Okay, so our next, any other questions about, our next item to win on the education equity plan receipt?
Thank you. Just what you've been waiting for, me.
Actually, we do.
How are you? What y'all been getting? Me too, cranberry sauce. We have two bits in.
Yes.
I've been making pot roast, Mississippi mud.
All right, I got a bao keg.
All right, here we go, okay. The Children's Center contracts, we have the two, uh, P R C O two six, which is, um, contracting to support our children and youth experiencing homelessness. As well as our, uh, P R C O five zero, which is the Title One. And we use those funds for our most at-risk children as defined by ESSO. And those are really our tier two, tier three kids that just being in a regular educational setting every day is not quite appropriate for them. And they need some extra care, love, support, and create a sense of belonging. And we can do that through the Children's Center because of their absolutely amazing people that they have there with their certifications and extra training that we just don't have. So any questions about the, the contracted services?
So this is just saying they get the same education as everybody else? Is that what it's?
If, if, if they have a, um, a mental health need or a coping need, maybe they've been, uh, coping negatively. Then the Children's Center have trained individuals that can come in and help them with more appropriate, positive types of coping. As well as if they need some extra support, they're in an alternative learning plan, that they have tutors there that can go in and really support them. Sometimes some of our children, they're at promise, they just need a little extra attention, a little extra love, and, uh, they get lost in the big classes.
We can use our federal funds and if they've got some things that we're not specialized in, they can.
I got you, Sam.
It's supplemental. So, and, uh, that was just asking for your approval for those two contracts, and then do you want me to go on to the, the next thing, so, okay, okay?
Let's go do that, then we'll vote back on.
Okay, so, uh, and then just the acknowledgement for the educational equity plan, um, and for twenty-four, twenty-five. This is something we have to have four meetings a year, we have to do stakeholder input, and you've probably seen the screencast, it's both English and Spanish on social media. So we hope everyone, if you have a, if you have any desire and you want to look at that, and please give us input, we'd love to have your input, and it means a lot to us. Because we're here for you, we're here for those, those children sitting in those seats and the families at home, so we absolutely love that input. Very proud of our teachers, I did say that the three-year, the teacher ineffectiveness rating is based on three years. And when you look at that third year, that was school year twenty-one, twenty-two, and we know what that was like. So we really, we've already decreased from sixty down to forty, our attrition rate has gone down to two point two. And we are using the same strategies that we used last year because they worked. So we're gonna continue with those for that consistency, and we believe that with that twenty-one, twenty-two rolling off, that our teacher effectiveness data. Is going to continue to improve because we've got a great group of teachers in Surry County schools.
So if we had one of the best teachers in the school. And they were not certified maybe in that particular subject.
Yes, sir.
Or area, they're considered, regardless of their, how well they're doing, they're considered, uh.
Out of field.
Well, it's out of field, and therefore they're taking the classification being ineffective.
No, sir, ineffective is your three-year score for, from student growth. That's all that is, so when you look at that, um, the way that the data is, is pulled out, you have your out-of-field teachers. That's your teachers with residency license, teaching for a high school teacher, teaching in, in a middle school, elementary possibly certification, teaching grade seven or eight. So that's considered out of field. Now, your teacher ineffectiveness data, and there's two ways you see you can get that, you can get that through your nieces' score, and if the teacher scored as developing. But we don't have anyone in Surry County schools, so that's typically why we don't use that as a rating, um, for our data for educator equity. But we do use the teacher effectiveness score, which comes through E V O S, and that's a three-year kind of amalgamation of all those scores for student growth. And that's the reason why I felt like I needed to talk about that bias of twenty-one, twenty-two being a school year, where there's lots of. You know, out of the box things going on that normally don't go on, and we didn't have some of the high school students in all the time, so. That's, I think that skewed that data for many of those teachers, to be quite honest with you.
So their effectiveness is really based on their results?
A student grade.
Being a new teacher or considered out of field?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, and, and it is, E V O S is test for it, right, so that's not always fair, I mean, bad day, good day.
Yeah.
Okay, so. We need, so we need to, uh.
Just acknowledge.
Acknowledge receipt.
Acknowledge.
And then you have to submit this by December first, so, so you can meet your, your deadline, okay? All right, so we acknowledge it, it's by consensus, we acknowledge the receipt, out of the plan, is that, okay, okay?
And I'll make a motion that we approve those contracted services with the Children's Center.
Okay, all right, motion by Mr. Bloodsoe, second by Mr. Whitaker, to approve the contracts with the Children's Center for at-risk and homeless. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
Thank you.
And then we gotta ring in three oh two, which is the budget development calendar, uh, can we get a motion to approve that? Thank you, man.
We approve that.
Thank you.
To approve the budget development plan, uh, so as we go forward, the second by Mr. Goins. We got, Mr. Whitaker, Mr. Goins, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Thank you. No close session. And before anybody sits, is there anything else you need, Doug, anything else with you?
No, sir.
I want to ask you if you would make the last motion to adjourn as a board member.
I'm not ready to adjourn.
If you're not ready to adjourn, you wanted to start, go home, you're hungry after all that.
They're pushing me around now.
You wanted to do it, you just don't want me to ask you to do it, okay, all right, we got a motion by Mr. Goins, and we adjourned with a little arm twisted. Second by Mr. Whitaker, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Thank you, thank you, thank you.